I do the same thing. Airplanes are for both our hands.
The hour of 11:30 having arrived, the Santa Cruz City Council meeting for October 22, 2024 is called to order, and the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Newsom?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Watkins?
Here.
Brunner?
Present.
Calentari Johnson?
Present.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Here.
And Mayor Keeley?
Here. We are on statements of disqualification. Any member have a disqualification need to notice at this point? We are on public comment on our closed session. We have some items on closed session, items under item one. We have six items there. We have conference with legal counsel as well. Does anyone wish to make comment on our closed session agenda before we adjourn into that closed session? Let me see if there's anyone online, Ms. Bush. Anyone with their hand raised?
Nobody with their hand raised.
No one with their hand raised. So the way we will proceed is we will adjourn now into closed session. We will return from closed session no earlier than 12:05 PM. We stand adjourned in closed session.
Mayor, really quick, if I could just announce?
Yes, please.
We do have two people of the members of the public signed in. We need them to log off the meeting.
Please do. So those of you that are online, please log off so that we can go into closed session. We appreciate your cooperation in that regard. We good, Ms. Bush?
Yes, we still have Owen Lawler signed on.
Mr. Lawler, if you would log off, that'd be great.
I can't boot him out. We're good.
We're good. Thank you very much. We are adjourned into closed session. The hour of 12:05 having arrived and the council having completed its business in closed session, we are back in open session and the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Newsom?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Watkins?
Here.
Brunner?
Present.
Calentari Johnson?
Present.
Vice Mayor Golda is currently absent, and Mayor Keeley?
Present. Quorum having been established, we will move to oral communication. This will be the opportunity for anyone to address us on a matter under our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda for a period of time not to exceed two minutes. In the event that we have folks both here and online, what we will do is toggle back and forth. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Mayor and the city council members. I'm Stephen Bosworth. I live on Pacific Mall, Pacific Avenue North. By now, I trust you will have received a document in connection with the request that several of us made two weeks ago regarding wishing you to set up a commission to consider all the pros and cons of establishing ranked choice voting instead of the current system. The main argument for that, we think, but we would like that commission to test this claim, that this would have a number of advantages. Instead of the some 15% of the voting population that you would represent, instead you would be representing almost 90% of that voting population. It would also save money in that you would not any longer have to have 10 yearly district reformations, and you would not have to have primary elections. And the great thing is that many more of the citizens would feel that they are invested in your proceedings because they would see one of you as one that they had preferred. So I'm hoping that you will do this. We're requesting this in response to advice given to us by the General Secretary, General, sorry, the Attorney General, who when we, knowing that he is in favor of ranked choice voting or open to ranked choice voting as a solution for the, under the California Voting Rights Act, he advised us that we should first try remedy, local remedies. And this request that we are making to you is that step in that direction. We hope that you will consider these arguments for and against in this commission and come up with a, we hope, the more democratic solution. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone online, Ms. Bush? We'll take the first person online. Good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting. Person online. Person online. Three, two, one. Mr. Ewing, good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
What would we do without technology? I'd be quite happy if it all disappeared and went back to the 1840s.
That's a rhetorical question.
Well, some technology is better than others, so time, 159, not two, not three, not 17, okay. Was listening to something on Brighteon. Mike Adams was interviewing Dr. Shiva, and the title was Dr. Shiva Unleashes Truth Bombs on Zionist Servants Trump, JFK Junior, Kamala, Biden, and Stein. Really interesting hour and a half dialogue. Truly fascinating. So, you know, I gave blood today. American Red Cross would never take their blood. It's disgusting. It's just one of the many disgusting corporations, you know? Due to the recent Hurricane Helene, American Red Cross made a statement there, there is no contamination with the individuals who've had the latest vaccinations the last three and a half years and people who haven't. We all are in this together because that nanotechnology is everywhere. People's shit jumps on me all the time, but I still engage. So, I don't know. There's other things to comment on later. 50 seconds. Now I'm going to pull that off on the consent agenda. So that's enough for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Do we have anyone else online, Ms. Bush?
We do. I can confirm that people via Zoom can hear them. It's an audio thing on my end, on my computer. So if it doesn't work, I'm still working on it.
Okay. So should I call on someone now, online?
Sure.
Next person online. Good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting.
We'll come back.
We'll come back. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon. This Tuesday, myself and other community members observed what the city and CP, SCPD call a humane sweep of the residents of Pogonip. In the past, these sweeps have been performed citing environmental health concerns over lead contamination in the ground, which allowed them to forcefully displace the residents of Pogonip with heavy machinery and armed officers. Residents were caused a great distress, and many would have been unable to fully move their stuff without help. This would have led to a loss of shelter, food, clothing, and personal items, possibly threatening their lives. Residents of Pogonip have also reported to us that they saw a drone flying over them, seemingly being used to count or monitor them, a claim we believe considering we saw a drone in operation during the raid in Pogonip on July 29. On June 28, the Supreme Court decided that it was no longer against the Eighth Amendment for cities and localities to ban sleeping in public, even if people had nowhere else to go. In California, Gavin Newsom only exacerbated the problem by doubling down, announcing his executive order to sweep all dangerous encampments on California state property on July 25. Since then, living homeless in America has only gotten more dangerous. With the legal protections completely removed, states and localities no longer have to worry about violating a constitutional amendment and can now act with the impunity they've been waiting for. Before then, the state of California claimed that officials provided social services before forceful displacement and threatening individuals with arrest, services which were not offered on October 15. The lack of medical, mental health, and social resources given to the residents of Pogonip is exemplary of the police-centered model for forceful displacement in Santa Cruz. This model and its issues would only be made worse by constructing a regional public safety training facility as requested by Fire Chief Rob Odie. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, Ms. Bush, or are we still having a little trouble? I'm sorry, I just missed. Are we still having a little trouble with the online?
Still working on it.
Good afternoon. Welcome. Good afternoon.
City council members, what citizens want you to understand is that the residents and community of the city of Santa Cruz can see right through what's transpiring here. Santa Cruz, it was a master class in achieving the same repression as other more conservative areas of the country while managing to package it in a way that leads people to believe it is a necessary good for the community. Currently, the project is listed as a climate action plan under the capital improvement plan, which is comical considering the amount of land excavation needed for a public safety training center would cause great harm to our climate. We know that $2 million have been allocated to the project, and that Fire Chief Rob Odie believes a joint facility with UCSC would be in everyone's best interest. But the location for the facility still stays TBD. Building a cop training facility on a campus where over 150 cops just brutalized the Santa Cruz community this past May and continue to intimidate students and faculty over their anti-genocide work would lead to increased danger to the student body and community. We should not strengthen a UC police department that has deep issues of racism, sexism, transphobia, and general brutality. We ask you now to turn away from past repression and brutality by rejecting the public safety training center. This center would only lead to overpolicing in Santa Cruz, strengthen the corrupt UCPD, and harm our local climate. Please take the path of funding real social services like housing, food, healthcare, and childcare, which is far more likely to decrease crime than policing. Please reject the public safety training center. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Mr. Thompson, good afternoon.
Good mornings, or I guess good afternoon. Good afternoon, Santa Cruz City Council. My name is Joe Thompson. I live in District Five, and I'm here today on behalf of Bay Mac. I want to thank, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to our mayor Fred Keeley for graciously meeting with me and a few others last week. Also want to thank councilmember Calentari Johnson and Renee Golda, although she's not here, for being at the community meeting for West Cliff Drive last night. That was a great event, so thank you for all the work you guys do. On behalf of Bay Mac, the Bay Area Municipal Elections Committee, I am speaking in support of ranked choice voting. We are asking the council to form a subcommittee to explore ranked choice voting and other improvements to our city's electoral system. Bay Mac has unanimously endorsed ranked choice voting because it will, one, move elections to the general election where we have more diverse voter turnout, and, two, it has shown to remove barriers for more LGBTQ candidates to run for office and achieve elected office. Please stand with the Bay Area Municipal Elections Committee and Santa Cruz LGBTQ community and move ranked choice voting forward. If you have any questions or would like to have a meeting to discuss this opportunity and meet with Bay Mac to kind of show you like what we're looking for and have these, you know, open discussions, we want it to be a community process and have these kind of, you know, like the West Cliff Drive meetings, have an open discussion in public about what the city is looking for, how we can make sure these new districts are the most representative for the city council, and how we can move forward and make sure everyone's voices is heard in our local government. And I just want to note, I've only done this twice. This is my second time speaking at open oral communications. I sometimes will chime in to comment on agenda items, but usually I don't show up and speak at oral communications. So thank you for listening to me and all the other people that spoke, and it means a lot to have this ability to speak to you on issues that we really care about. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Good afternoon. Welcome.
You've already heard a few people comment about the project called the Regional Public Safety Training Center. I just want to make it abundantly clear that you cannot fund such a project, especially at UCSC. The reason seems, at least to me, fairly obvious. As you know, earlier this year in May, our administration unleashed approximately 500 law enforcement officers on students. A lot of people were injured, some were permanently injured. That decision physically, materially altered the rest of their lives. People were nearly killed, and we're honestly very lucky that nobody died. If this training center is funded, that would invite way more police to campus, and I think that would be distasteful after the extreme force that students faced from law enforcement less than five months ago. I guarantee you that those people who were permanently harmed and anyone who cares about them will make it their life's work to stop that project from going any further. None of us want future students to suffer the same fate. None of us. You will not fund the Regional Public Safety Training Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Wood, online with their hand raised. All right. Anyone else wish to comment under oral communications?
Mayor? May I?
Certainly, Ms. Brown.
I recognize that this is not a time when we generally respond to the public, but I do want to, in this case, we've had people come to speak to us about ranked choice voting and specifically evaluative proportional representation. Those who were on the council previously know that I am a big supporter of exploring this, and I believe it didn't get a real hearing due to the politics at the time. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that the, that we place on a future agenda consideration of the establishment of a committee to explore ranked choice voting with engagement from the public.
There is a motion. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. We are on presiding officer announcements. I have none. Statements of disqualification. Anyone have a disqualification on the agenda, either consent or otherwise? Additions and deletions? Ms. Wood, any additions or deletions?
No.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, any additions or deletions?
No.
The understanding, however, is that if you were here on item, let me get to it. Give me a moment. You are here on the item, item 18 relating to the homeless garden project. That item has been removed from the agenda on a previous action within the last day or so. City Attorney report, Madam City Attorney, any reports from closed session?
Yes. Council met in closed session in the courtyard conference room. Item one on the closed session agenda was a conference with legal counsel related to liability claims, and those claims are noted in the closed session agenda. And I would note that the same claims are also on your open session agenda, item nine. Item two on the closed session agenda was a conference with legal counsel regarding a significant exposure to litigation, and no reportable action was taken on that item.
Thank you. We are on item. We are on item three. Madam City Clerk, do we have any items you'd like to draw to our attention on future agendas?
No.
Thank you very much. We are on consent agenda. For those of you who might be unfamiliar with this, we will be taking up items four through 14 inclusive on one motion. What I will do is give the opportunity for council members to comment on an item, pull an item, et cetera. Will then give the public the opportunity to make comments on the consent agenda. If you are going to be making a comment on the consent agenda, you should make all of your comments at one time on the, on the consent agenda. Let me start with, yes? Certainly.
Sorry, that went so fast.
All right.
So I have a statement of disqualification for item number 16 as it relates to my employment. I also wondered if we might just take one minute and just briefly outline anticipated agenda item times. I see people here for the ADU ordinance item, which is not until after 3:00, 3:30.
I'm sorry. What is your question?
I see people here for the ADU ordinance item on the agenda, which is towards the end of the agenda.
Yeah.
And I wonder if there's an estimated time we can share so they're not sitting here if they don't need to for hours.
Well, what I'll say is we have time estimates on the agenda. It's the best estimate we have. This looks like it might come up around 4:00. I want to be very careful. We could take this up. We're going in order, in sequence. Don't rely on me telling you it might not come up before 4:00. Do not do that. We're going to go through our agenda in the regular order of things. Further, Councilmember Newsom on the consent agenda. Councilmember Brown on the consent agenda.
Nothing, thanks.
Councilmember Watkins on the consent agenda. Councilmember Brunner.
None for me, thank you.
Councilmember Calentari Johnson.
Yeah, I comment on 12.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Great. So this is the 800 block of West Cliff. There was some lack of understanding around what this item was, so I just want to clarify that this item is just to approve the issuing of an RFP to procure a consultant team and then to do a budget adjustment for the new project. There aren't any plans at this time for the city to purchase Lighthouse Field, State Park. If we move forward with this, with this project, a small portion will have to be procured, and that will come to the council at a later date. So just wanted to clarify that for everyone, and also just take the opportunity to, again, thank public work staff and all the departments that are doing a tremendous amount of work on West Cliff, and the departments that showed up last night to the West Cliff Roadmap meeting, and the community members for your involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor is not present. This will be the opportunity for anyone to address us on an item on the consent agenda. This will be items four through 14 inclusive. Good afternoon, Mr. Ewing.
Thank you, Mr. Keeley. My name is James Ewing Whitman. My, I'm not going to talk on number six, the civil grand jury. I'm going to talk to number four, the minutes. Now, I was standing here on the eighth, and I got here late. I was listening to some people talk about the CARES Act, and the public wasn't allowed to make comments on that. Now, it's my understanding that an individual that goes through the undergraduate degree and the graduate degree and does their 2,500 hours and get their master's in social work, and if they so decide, they can give somebody a 5150 or a 5250. Now, I recall a year ago, I didn't take the time yet to go through the dialogue or my notes, but that person could identify this mic to give anybody a 5250. Now, it's my understanding also that law enforcement in California can recommend a 5150 to people. So I think it's, gosh, I think it was really kind of criminal that the public couldn't make comments on that. I don't know what else to say besides criminal. I'm not really happy about that. I think that is a very strong issue. We have so many issues coming up with, you know, bankruptcy of this country for what, the fifth time? And what's going to happen when a lot more people become homeless and maybe get agitated and can't speak as peacefully as possible to people they have difference of agreements with and don't have the practice of talking their way out of conversations with supposed authority? So I guess my note is that that was really kind of annoying to me personally. I'm glad that I started recording when I was in line, and I tried to talk to a few of the individuals, two of which weren't here yesterday, the year before, so who knows? So that's about all I want to say right now. It's just kind of, it's pretty annoying. I'll leave it at that. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Anyone online? Matters back before the body, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilmember Watkins moves the consent agenda. Councilmember Calentari Johnson, seconds. Is there debate or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda is currently absent, and Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We are on general business. That would take us to item 15. This is an ordinance rescinding uncodified ordinance 1440 and an ordinance establishing the Planning Commission and amending chapter 18.41.040, appointment to the Board of Building Permit Appeals and length of terms. Staff presentation. Marisol Gomez, Assistant Director of Finance, is going to present on this item.
I don't see Marisol, but I can sort of explain it in her absence if you would like.
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Bush.
If you remember, we had updated a lot of the commission to receive compensation, and there were two committees who specifically was spelled out that they could not be compensated for their duties, the Planning Commission and then the Historic Preservation.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe with the Board of Building Appeal. Sorry, I'm not prepared for this. So this is just to get everybody on the compensation piece of service.
Very good. Thank you. Questions, comments? Anyone with us wish to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing none, matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. Ms. Brown?
I'll move the recommendation.
Ms. Brown moves the recommendation. Mr. Newsom, seconds. Debate or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda is absent, and Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We are on item 16, Downtown Expansion Plan, Downtown Density Bonus, and Anti-Displacement Policy. There's a staff report and recommendations in our packet. Ms. Noisy, Senior Planner, Mr. Van Waal, Principal Planner, will be presenting on this item. Mr. Butler, good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Lee Butler, Director of Planning and Community Development, and Matt and Sarah will be with us momentarily. I'll go ahead and get going on this. Bonnie, can we get the next slide? All right. So council will recall that we received direction back in January of '23 to proceed with the downtown plan with a objective to meet three different standards. The first was the 12-story maximum building height. The second was 20% of new housing at below market rate, and that is the total amount of housing that is produced in that area. And the third was planning for 1,600 residential units and studying 1,800 residential residential units for the south of Laurel area. We talked at the time about the state density bonus and how that has limitations on our ability to achieve those goals that the council has set out for us, but that we can still work towards those goals. And that's what we have in our council presentation today. The state density bonus can still be used. Want to be clear about that. And the state density bonus does allow for exceeding of height limits, setbacks in open space, and it offers financial incentives to developers. And so the question or the challenge that we had before us was meeting those three objectives while still doing something that is going to be more attractive than the state density bonus. And so we are looking at how we can exceed the number of below-market rate units as compared to the density bonus. So we'll talk about this a little bit more later in the presentation. But when state density bonus is applied, the overall percentage of affordable units in the project goes down. And we'll have the examples of that in a few, in later slides so you can see that. So one of the objectives from council, twenty percent of the total number of units. We've got a city downtown density bonus that looks, that seeks to achieve that. Second, we have an ability to regain additional local control through the approach, the downtown density bonus approach that the, that's recommended before you today. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. And then this is an optional system. So a developer can still choose to use the state density bonus, and what we have sought to do is make the downtown density bonus more attractive than the state density bonus. All right. Matt, you want me to keep going, or do you want to take it over? You want to keep going? I'll keep going. So with the downtown density bonus, the developers agree to forego the state density bonus. You can't use both. If you're choosing to use our density bonus, then you're going to use that. They are choosing to accept the density bonus in relation to the floor area ratio, and we'll talk about that a little bit more momentarily. And then when we're talking about that regaining some of the local control, the developer would also voluntarily subject themselves to the architectural review committee review that can provide recommendations on building design and site design. And then that would then ultimately come before the city council for a decision. So if they choose this route, they're choosing a more discretionary route. We need to still make this attractive to them so that they don't choose the state density bonus. And so we would put some bookends on that discretion because with the state density bonus, there is very little discretion, as council members are well aware. And then we have, as of last week, if the council chooses to give direction and move forward in this approach, we have put together a planning commission subcommittee that can provide guidance and design expertise on some very specific components. This is a very limited subcommittee. We're thinking over the next few weeks, right before we get this plan, draft plan document out, to assist us in helping particularly with some of those subjective design criteria that would then guide these development projects. We are currently recommending that this apply to our, all parcels within the downtown expansion area. And that is because the state density bonus applies in all parcels. So this offers the best opportunity to meet those council objectives of achieving the twenty percent of affordable units and the twelve-story height limit. Both of those in particular are directly affected by this. All right, so let's talk about the downtown density bonus now. There are two options for the bonus. One is if you're staying below eighty-five feet in height, and the other is if you're staying below one hundred and forty-five feet in height. So there's an eight-story, eighty-five-foot height limit that would allow you to get an unlimited floor area ratio if you use this approach. And then there is an approach where if you wanted to go above that, you could get a seventy-five percent floor area ratio bonus. And council will recall that that eighty-five-foot height limit is where construction materials change. So that's why that distinction is made in this. There are, when we, when we talk about the downtown density bonus, there are three options that can be utilized. The first is onsite, the second is offsite, and the third is in lieu. I'm going to go through each of those briefly here. So one hundred and fifty units in a, a project that is built within the south of Laurel area, we would have thirteen point three percent of those as low-income units and eight percent of those as moderate-income units. This is based on the overall project. So, you know, in a density bonus project, you would typically have the base as a hundred units and the density bonus project as a hundred and fifty units, right? And the percentages that we apply are on the base project. What we are recommending here is that those percentages apply to the total number of units, and that's why you see the thirteen point three and the eight percent. And that gets us to the twenty-one point three percent. And you might ask, why is a developer going to choose this when they could do a similar project that is a thirteen point three percent below-market rate if they're using the state density bonus? And the answer lies in the levels of affordability. When you look at the state density bonus, you'd have to do fifteen percent of that base project as very low income, which is fifty percent AMI, and then you would have five percent at low income. And if you look at these, these affordability levels, it's thirteen point three percent of the total at low income, eighty percent AMI, and eight percent at moderate income, which is a hundred and ten percent AMI, area median income in this instance.
Yeah, I've been constantly prepping the papers.
So twenty-one point three percent of that total. So that is the primary way in which we are able to achieve that, that direction from the council of getting to twenty percent at below-market rate. The second approach that someone could use, and you'll notice, you know, the green houses here are within that same development, in the second approach, the green houses here are in a separate project. So in this instance, if you've got a hundred and fifty units on the project site in the downtown plan expansion area, you could do twenty-six point seven of those offsite. You could do those offsite. So again, it's a higher percentage. You do, we want to do offsite. It's a higher percentage that you would need to achieve, and that would get at the council's goal of producing a substantial number of affordable units, in this case, even more. There are locational restrictions that we have built in to our proposal in terms of where that offsite project could go. It includes within the downtown plan itself, within a half-mile of the expansion area or within the coastal zone, right? The downtown plan expansion area is all within the coastal zone and we're cognizant of having affordable housing mixed within the coastal zone as well. So that's the second option, offsite. And then the third option here is in lieu fees. And the in lieu fees would go towards our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and our Affordable Housing Trust Fund could be getting, you know, upwards of ten million dollars from a single project. You know, that's obviously going to vary depending on the size of that project, but we have been talking with one development team, and based on the numbers that they have been contemplating, if they were to choose that in lieu fee option, that would be about a ten-million-dollar contribution. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Sarah Noisy here, our Senior Planner, and she can talk about how some of that in lieu fee can be used as part of.
Ms. Noisy, good afternoon. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Apologies for my tardiness. Y'all are running snappy meetings lately, so I thought forty-five minutes ahead of time would be plenty, and I was wrong, so my sincerest apologies. Thanks, Lee, for covering the beginning part of this presentation. I do just want to address this piece about displacement. So we've heard from both the community and from council members, planning commissioners, concerns about displacement. As we discussed in the staff report, the state law and our local codes already provide pretty robust accommodations for people who are directly displaced. That is, they live on a parcel that is going to be redeveloped. State law provides forty-two months of relocation support for low-income tenants that are in that situation. Our local ordinance provides two months of relocation support for anyone in that moderate income category. And then again, state law requires a minimum of one month for any involuntary move by a tenant. So one of the things that's not covered is sort of this indirect displacement. So this is sort of one of the concerns people have around gentrification. Are there any ways that we can strengthen and create a local preference to support households that might be at risk of facing this indirect displacement simply because rents are rising, market conditions are changing for them? So typically, in publicly funded projects, so projects that are one hundred percent below-market rate housing, a lot of those funding sources prohibit including local preferences, so preferences for local residents. Those units have to be publicly available housing and open to really any American resident or citizen. There are a couple of exceptions to that, and SB six forty-nine, which was passed, I believe, two years ago, created a new protected category of households at risk of displacement, defined those households, and created the opportunity for local jurisdictions to create a program to fund one hundred percent below-market rate projects that reserve a portion of those units for households at risk of displacement that meet that definition. So there are some challenges with a program like this. It requires a really substantial amount of funding because you have to be able to fund a whole project, relying heavily on those city sources. And if we had such a source of funds, it could be a really great tool for ensuring that there is a set aside specifically allocated to city residents who are at risk of displacement from economic forces. So that, this is one of the reasons we wanted to include that in lieu fee option to create and support that funding as a resource, to be, in order to be able to create that tenant So with that, we'll get to our staff recommendation, which is a request for a motion to direct staff to include this downtown density bonus as discussed here and in the report in the amendments when we bring them forward for your final review as part of the downtown specific plan. Consider options for a funding source could be used to create a local affordable housing tenant preference for households at risk of displacement. That will take a little bit of extra work. There's some statistical analysis that has to be conducted, so we're looking for direction on that. And then finally acknowledge that the council's direction as part of this action is exempt from SEQA under SEQA guidelines, fifteen three oh six, information gathering. And we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Let's start with questions or comments from members. Questions, comments? Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Thank you for the substantial work that you've all done to try to respond to the direction given by council and appreciate the policy goals. I am wondering about the, on the in lieu option, I definitely understand the logic and appreciate the interest in addressing local preference. Wondering how, if you could talk a little bit more about how you came to the sixty-dollar per square foot formula?
Sure, yeah, happy to. So we worked with Kaiser Marston to analyze kind of what the, what the difference in cost would be between the city downtown density bonus and the state density bonus. So always in our minds is thinking about incentivizing choosing the city program over using the state density bonus. So we looked at sort of the difference in rent that could be generated on a project if you hold constant the number of base units, the number of bonus units, and then we start adjusting those levels of affordability and percentages. And we got to a gap between those two of about fifty-eight dollars a square foot. It was like fifty-eight and change. So wanting to make that in lieu fee, I mean, we do want to make it a real option, and we don't want it to be the most appealing option. We'd like people to, you know, choose to build onsite, so we've made, we've kind of scaled these incentives in that way. So onsite, financially based on our analysis, is going to be the biggest incentive. Then next would come offsite, and then finally would come that in lieu fee. So we just took that gap and rounded it up. That's how we got there.
Ms. Brown? Other members on this item? Members of the public who are with us today wish to comment on this item? This would be your opportunity to do so. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Shields. I'm from the newly minted local six-four-six for the Carpenters Union. Five-oh-five that was domiciled in, in Aptos is no longer, and now we are six-four-six. It's Monterey and Santa Cruz County combined. I've come and spoke before this body several times, and a few times considering the downtown expansions planning specifically. I think that it's extremely important that some level of labor standard be applied to it, you know, whether it's healthcare, if it's apprenticeship, if it's something. But what it is, is it's an investment in the people who are going to be building it, right? I was just looking through some of the documentation that we have. You have individuals traveling from Stockton to build this that are being paid a substandard wage and probably likely sleeping on, in their cars around town here, right, to save money. I remember when I walked one of the projects downtown here a few years ago when it was still wood frame, I ended up speaking with a framer who, him and his friends stayed in their car, and they commuted in from out of town. And that's, that's how these projects, that's how this beautiful downtown expansion plan will be, will be built. It'll be built on the backs of people who are sleeping in their cars four nights a week and trying to commute home to, to have some form of family or livelihood. So I think that a level of, of labor standard would be extremely appropriate to apply here, and it would provide for opportunity for folks that live here in Santa Cruz. And if it does end up bringing in people from Stockton again, at least that individual would have a level of dignity building it. Yeah, so I would love to have that conversation with each and every one of you to follow this up, and I know that we're sort of late, but I'd like for that application to be made. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone online, Ms. Bush? With their hand raised?
Nobody with their hand raised.
Good afternoon. Welcome. Hi.
Hi, my name's Kim. I'm just kind of entering politics today. So I'm just curious, I can't really decipher if you're going to be doing a twelve-story building or an eight-story building based on the proposition that was put up there. Can you answer that for me?
I think the answer to that question is, from a policy perspective, here's what we're managing towards. We're managing towards sixteen hundred units downtown, no building. We're managing towards 1,600 units downtown, no building taller than 12 stories. 20% of all of those units after density bonuses are in one of the affordable categories as defined by the state and federal government. As to whether people go eight stories or 12 stories, that's a decision private sector developers are going to make. What is being recommended to us is trying to create those incentives to go with the greatest density downtown, getting the greatest number of affordable units. And based on issues such as construction materials, the concept is it may incent folks to go with the smaller buildings with greater floor area ratio. I think that may be sort of the nub of this issue today.
Okay, I didn't follow the second part very well, but, so it sounds like a 12-story building.
Say it again, excuse me.
I just didn't follow the second part of that, but it sounds like you're, you're trying to increase housing in Santa Cruz.
Yes.
And the way I understand it is, you know, the University of California continues to bring more and more students in, and they can't keep up with the housing need. So the Santa Cruz city is building housing to accommodate the students. And that's all good, because hopefully we can figure out how to accommodate the needs of our low-income people, you know, as the secondary priority, which is unfortunately the secondary priority. But my comment is, I really hope that the council can start paying attention to cultural perspectives on this. The fact that UCSC has its own approach to what's happening in our society. The fact that the Latino population has its own approach to what's happening in society. And the Housing Matters people have an approach that, and they're really actually having a lot of problems, I think, that need to be really, they have their own set of problems that really need to be worked on. And I think that if we, instead of just throw it all in one basket, I have to say, instinctually, I liked the displaced housing. You know, we're low-income, I mean, I was a little bit scared that it would be like substandard, but like, putting, you know, the low-income community together in a, in a separate area seems like a better, healthier culture to me. And avoiding, you know, like imposing on, you know, Latino population in the coastal areas, like kind of, I know it sounds like segregation, but I think that culturally it will, it would be useful to pay attention to those issues. And I'd like to see transitional rehab at Housing Matters. I want it to be transitional. And then those people can get integrated into the community that are clean and sober.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to comment on this item? Matters back before the body, brought here to the body. Councilmember Newsom?
I'll make a motion to accept a staff recommendation.
There's a motion, there's a second by Ms. Colentari Johnson. Debate or discussion? You may open on your motion, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, just very briefly just thank staff for bringing this forward and this downtown density bonus plan forward, for the downtown density plan. I'm happy to see this plan, and it's moving towards us regaining local control in terms of trying, trying to regain some local control, provide more affordable housing, and I'm really happy to see, looking into how we can implement SB 649 and identify funding sources for an anti-tenant displacement preference. So just want to thank staff for bringing this forward and happy to support it.
Councilmember Watkins is recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank this app also. I was curious, as we were going through the presentation, how many plans have this type of design? It seems innovative to me in terms of this local density option as an incentive over the state density option. And I'm wondering if you could speak to how it's compared with other jurisdictions?
You're asking if other places have their own local density bonus programs?
Yeah, as a priority, or sort of as an incentive.
I'm, so there are lots of places that have a local density bonus. I, I'm not aware of any at this point that are like specifically targeting competition with the state density bonus. I mean, if we weren't in the middle of doing a big plan like this, I don't know that we would have been driven to create a policy if you all would have been driven to give us that direction, right? So I'm not currently aware of anyone else that's like specifically pursuing this.
Yeah, which is great. I think it's really innovative, and thank you for your work for coming up with a solution that I feel like does help our council have some control at the local level to design what we're hoping to see, you know, in our downtown. So, yeah, just, yeah, thank you, and I'm supportive of the motion.
Councilmember Colentari Johnson?
Yeah, Councilmember Watkins sort of took the words out of my mouth. We gave a very challenging policy direction, and there was a lot of out-of-the-box thinking, so just want to acknowledge and appreciate that.
Councilmember Brown?
I too want to appreciate the staff for coming up with, or attempting to come up with an approach that we can use here locally, given the state law and the density bonus rules, which are, you know, quite attractive to developers. I think that, and I've said this before, local control maintaining as much as we possibly can is critical. I intend to support the motion, but I do want to say I have some concerns, I always have concerns about in-lu. You know, we know that we didn't get any low-income units built in our community for a very long time because developers opt for in-lu fees as an alternative. And so I'm, given the, all the kind of moving parts here and the interest in making this about supporting potentially displaced residents, I am, will, I'm gonna give it, I'm gonna say yes, let's try this. I do have some concerns about, also about the second option. So just thinking about what, where these offsite units that would be approved and kind of constructed almost concurrently, I won't go into the details of that, but I appreciate how you laid that out. The, a lot of the area that might be available for that, for new construction would be actually redevelopment of, there's existing housing stock there, much of which is what I think folks here like to call naturally occurring affordable housing, not deed restricted. But, so there's going to be, in order to redevelop there, there would be displacement as well. And so I guess I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, would that second option potentially be creating an additional displacement problem? So maybe, if you have any thoughts on that, I'd like to, another question, but, because I just want to make sure that I'm like, that the community is clear, that, you know, we're all clear about what that means.
Yeah, of course. That's, that's actually a really important point. I'm glad you brought that up. So the state law around housing has changed a lot in the last five years. You all are deeply aware of that. One of the ways that, in which it has changed is to strengthen protections for households that are facing direct displacement, which is the condition that you're describing. So when there is a lower-income household, as defined in state law, living on a site that is proposed to be redeveloped with any kind of housing, the following benefits are afforded to that tenant. They are entitled to a minimum of 42 months of relocation expenses, so three and a half years of paying the difference between their current rent and whatever rent they need to pay to be relocated. They are, have the right to stay in their unit until six months prior to the start of construction. They have the right to return to a deed-restricted, affordable unit. So 100% of the units that are occupied by low-income households have to be replaced with deed-restricted, affordable units, affordable to that income category. So yes, there is a period of displacement, and I don't want to minimize that. That can be very disruptive for communities. If construction takes two years, kids may be enrolled in different schools, not everyone may come back, right? Like, there is a concern there. And in terms of the housing stock that you're creating over time, you're going to get more units that are permanently affordable out of this condition than we have today. So that's, that's the answer to your question. So it's not a perfect solution, nothing is. And that is a piece that has been really well considered at this point in the state law, and we, of course, would comply with that.
And I did just want to add one more thing on that, too. Say there is a developer using this offsite option, and they're looking to put that project on somewhere that says, say it's 10 units that currently exist, and those 10 units are all, have lower-income households. We've also written into our policy that the state, the developer has to replace those 10 units per state requirements, but that those 10 units of replacement can't count towards the offsite amount. So they can't, they have to stack on top of each other, they can't be housed within each other. So that's even a, a better approach to, you know, further for those units.
Thank you for that, because that was the piece that I really wanted to get clarified as well. So thank you. Appreciate it.
And that's something we can do with the state density bonus, and we can do with this option. Thank you.
Further debate or discussion? Seeing here none. Clerk, we'll call the room.
Councilmembers Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruner disqualified. Colentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda is absent. And Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and is awarded. We're on item 17. This is brought to us by Human Resources. This amends the City of Santa Cruz Personnel Complement and Classification and Compensation Plans for the Economic Development, Housing Finance, Fire, Human Resources, Information Technology, Parks and Recreation, Planning and Community Development, Police, Public Works, and Water Departments. Ms. DeLeon, good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Thank you. We'll just take a moment to share the screen. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. So today, item 17, I have two distinct areas of focus in the staff report. One of them, in the larger fiscal impact, has to do with pay increases, compensation increases to multiple service areas of the city. And this is the larger focus of the report, of the fiscal impact. We will spend most of our time here. The second part of this report has to do with personnel complement changes to our general classification and comp plans, whether that's cleanup of classifications that are no longer used and some new ones. Some have fiscal impacts, others don't. So we'll go through that before the end. In regards to item one, the request before you today has to do with compensation increases with the following focus. What we looked at was service areas that have to do with public safety, that also have recruitment and retention issues, and that also, because of those recruitment and retention issues, based on service, certain projects coming up that could have a very negative impact if we don't have the staff to do the work. All of the proposal before you is based on our 2021 market study. I did not just pull numbers from the air. It is grounded and connected to benchmarking and mapping in our 2021 compensation study. It's also important to recognize that the fiscal impacts here overcould impact both our general fund and our enterprise funds as well. So in regards to the areas of focus, we're looking at our police departments, specifically our police officers, as well as police sergeants. And their vacancy rates and turnover rates have been quite high, as identified in our staff report. Sometimes consistently 20% just by vacancy. And over five years, we've recruited about 58 different times. And that cost for recruitment from a time-energy standpoint from multiple areas is a lot significant. And so when we're thinking about our police department, the proposal for them is a 2.5% increase for those police officers and sergeants to hopefully address some of our high turnover and vacancies. For our Building and Safety Division, Information Technology, and Water and Wastewater Services, these areas either have a mix of high vacancy or turnover rates, or, and/or service demands in major projects that are coming up that are critical for us to sustain. For example, legacy system upgrades in our Information Technology Department, capital improvement planning in both our water and wastewater, some totaling as high as $500 million in CIP, and very large upcoming development projects that impact our Building and Safety staff. Those specifically are our building inspectors and our plans examiners. Those complex projects really require someone looking at the appropriate architecture development and building throughout. California building code is complex, so it's important to keep those people in place. So again, those are the areas of focus, and kind of the journey of which the proposal is in front of you today. The total overall is about 1.8 million annually. 1.2 of that is enterprise funds. We did try to balance and minimize the impacts to the general fund itself, but recognizing the value add by, you know, retaining and recruiting staff, I do believe and recommend that it is worth moving forward with. So that's the compensation increase aspect, to attract and retain our staff. The second, smaller piece, is our classification and comp plan changes. There's a little bit with a fiscal impact of totaling about $42,000 of impact to our general fund. We add a new principal planner to our Transportation Division of Public Works, and we also correct a mapping issue in our Economic Development Department that we, I missed in a previous increase. And the items there without fiscal impact are basic deletions and additions of new classifications we're considering. One of them has been the program analyst, which I wanted to call out because this is a specific attempt of career development between internal staff, bridging gaps between our administrative series to our analyst series, and even trying to inspire our local, maybe students just graduating college. This is a really great entry point into local government, and I wanted to put a plug in for that new classification. With that said, I do want to note, with the permission of Ms. Bush, that we did have a revised budget adjustment, but otherwise, the motion is here before you for your consideration, and I'm available if questions.
Would you take just a moment on the revised item, so that the public is clear on the revision?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we just had a simple modification to the budget adjustment for the enterprise funds. It is not coming from their reserves. It is in fact coming from enterprise salary savings and a number of other specific accounts that their analysts helped with.
Thank you, Ms. DeLeon. Questions by members of Ms. DeLeon on this item? Members of the public who would wish to comment on this item? This would be your opportunity to do so. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am an SEIU member and steward at the City of Santa Cruz. I just want to urge you to pass this motion to bring our employees up to market rate. The 2021 classification study identified a lot of discrepancies in our positions in our area. This is the fifth compensation increase. I want to thank Sarah and Heidi for really championing this. The positions that this targets the most and affects the greatest are necessary for critical city operations in our Water and Wastewater Divisions. I just want to thank you for hearing this and strongly urge you to lift our employees up to continue to serve our residents the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you for your good work. Thank you for being here today. Ms. Bush, do we have anyone online who wishes to comment? We'll take the person online. Good afternoon and welcome. Person online, this is your opportunity.
Hello, this is Ken Bear. I'm the City of Santa Cruz and SEIU 521. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. So I'm calling in to concur with my shop steward that I just heard from, and I strongly recommend that we, that you adopt this proposal to bring members up to, closer to parity with, with their surrounding areas, in order to retain quality health and attract new help. If there is anything we can do in the future, I certainly hope we can work together towards that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Greg Bengson, resident of Santa Cruz and a registered voter. I, I totally back. I mean, parity is number one. That's how you keep a quality pool of personnel. And even, and the cops, there's people out there that have the things that say that they're equivalent to the KKK. No, no. I mean, number one, I think, and I told Escalante this, Chief Escalante, you know, they might hassle us, but I think they do it in a very professional, kind, professional, patient way. And, you know, truth needs to be... And, you know, truth needs to be told. Nobody should come to Santa Cruz thinking that they're going to be disrespected like that, and that's, but free speech. I totally back them. And take that as somebody who just had all of my belongings thrown away by the cops yesterday, but it's not their fault. They're told to do one thing, and if they make mistakes, they're still professionals about it. And so professionals can make mistakes, and we will follow up when they do make mistakes. But we'll do it in a kind, professional way, just the way they treat us and the way that you guys treat us, allow us to speak. And I think this is a great, a great city, a great city to be homeless in, a better city to be a resident. Well, I am a resident, but I really appreciate what is here, what's possible. You know, I had four tickets in 24 hours for loitering, which loitering is sitting around doing nothing with no apparent purpose. I mean, I, just yesterday, right before I got my stuff taken, I was taking care of people that were overdosing in the parking lot. All my Narcan was taken and thrown away. All my medical equipment was thrown away. Luckily, because we live in this sort of dope fiend environment, I still keep enough to save lives even when the cops throw away our stuff and call me loitering. Loitering, hanging out with no apparent purpose, make sure that this city council and that staff, and I don't mean to like, sorry, Matt, I actually appreciate everybody here. And let's just not loiter when we are at the helm of this ship. There's a lot more we can do. We really need to pay attention. Thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else online?
Not with their hand up.
Anyone else wish to comment on the item? Matters back before the body. Pleasure of the body. Ms. Contra, excuse me, Ms. Brown?
May I please? Thank you. I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
There's a motion.
I'll second.
We have lots of seconds. This time, Ms. Brunner, you're going to get the second on that. Ms. Brown, on your motion.
I just want to say that I am thrilled to have the opportunity to make this motion. Thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to do so, and thank you for the support. I have been on this body for almost eight years now, and most of the time, I have been the person who's been quite negative about the recommendations that come before us with respect to our bargaining units because I believe that, I mean, not that others don't, but I really truly believe that supporting our workforce is the most important thing that we do here. You all are the folks who make the city run. When I hear people say, there's, we can't afford it, it's like, we can't not afford it. We need to have people who are well compensated, who can afford to live here, who aren't sleeping in their cars themselves, working a city job, a public sector job. So I am just so thrilled. I want to really appreciate Ms. De Leon for all of the work that you have done. Your commitment is really beyond compare in all of the work that I've done here at the city and other public agencies. And thank the workers for, you know, continuing to stand up and to say, tell us what the right thing to do and hold us accountable. So, thank you, and thanks to everyone for being supportive of this increase in parity. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Further on this item, Ms. Brunner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just briefly wanted to say that since 2022, I haven't sat as long as Councilmember Brown, but since I was mayor in 2022, this has been a commitment to invest in our employees. And this is an example of the new position that Sarah De Leon fills and the work that's being done, and that we address organizational needs and commit in investing in our employees. This is part of city business. Thank you to each department and all the staff every day for the hard work, and we continue to make progress forward and really address, you know, the personnel complement. So thank you so much for finding a way to continue moving forward in this.
Thank you, Ms. Brunner. Further on the item, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Callan Terry Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda is currently absent. And Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and is awarded. Item 18 has been pulled from the agenda to no particular date in the future. Item 19, item 19 is a second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 2024-17, adding the municipal code and various other items regarding accessory dwelling units and other matters. We do have a staff report from Mr. Van Waal and the Planning Department. We have more than a couple of pieces of paper in our agenda packet. Mr. Van Waal, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Matt Van Waal, Principal Planner, Advanced Planning. And we have online, joining us remotely, Clara Steiger, who is the senior planner and the project manager for this, who will have a brief presentation for you all.
We do want to mention that we extend our best wishes to her because we understand she's a bit under the weather today. So we want to thank her for joining from not feeling well. That's very kind of her.
Thank you, Clara. Take it away.
Thank you so much, Mayor Keeley, for your best wishes. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Today, I'm presenting the second reading of proposed changes to the city's regulations for accessory dwelling units or ADUs. First reading, we received a fair amount of correspondence on this item, mostly relating to the owner occupancy question, and we have a few quick slides on that. I can keep talking while they're working on this slide. So basically, the first reading, what was approved was that we removed owner, the owner occupancy requirements for any newly permitted ADU permitted in 2020 and beyond, but we are retaining owner occupancy requirements for ADUs constructed before 2020. So we've heard from several people who believe that the city cannot continue to require that owner occupancy for ADUs constructed prior to 2020. And we've also received conflicting feedback from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. We reached out to them again and are awaiting a more definitive response from HCD. But based on what we've heard from various sources so far, the authors who wrote that law said that their intent was to remove owner occupancy for all ADUs, including retroactively for the existing ADUs. However, the law as written doesn't seem to reflect that intent. Next slide, please. So here's the state law section 66315, and you can read that on the screen. But basically, the state law section refers specifically to proposed ADUs, and we cannot, and that we cannot impose an owner occupancy requirement on a proposed ADU. So based on the fact that it says proposed, that is a specific limitation in the force of this language and how it can be applied. Therefore, based on this interpretation, council's decision would be considered consistent with state law as written, in that the amendments do not impose an owner occupancy requirement on proposed ADUs, but rather they retain an owner occupancy requirement that had been previously imposed on previously approved ADUs. Again, we are awaiting a formal response on this matter, and we can bring that back to council if needed. Next slide. And here's just next steps. So today, the next step would be to approve the second reading, if that's what council chooses to do. And then in December, we would bring an additional ordinance back to city council, and I can explain that in a moment. So regardless of the decision that council makes on this item, it is important that the ordinance is approved today so that the ordinance is in place within the state mandated timeframe and our local ordinance continues to be in effect. Otherwise, if this approval is delayed to a later date, it will cause our local ordinance to lapse for a week or more. If council does wish to make any changes today from what they had decided at the first reading, then staff recommends those changes be brought back as a separate item at a later date. We are bringing a follow-up ordinance to council in December to address the new state laws that will come into effect January 1st. And so any changes made today can be made with that ordinance if needed. HCD is also doing a separate review of our ordinance as required by the Coastal Commission. So any changes as a result of that review will also be brought in December with a follow-up ordinance. And that concludes my very brief presentation. Any staff available for questions?
Questions? Members? Questions, comments? Members of the public, this would be your opportunity to comment on this item. Good afternoon, welcome.
Okay, great.
Please do. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Dean, and I live on the Lower West Side with my husband and two kids. My son is Cooper. He's here supporting me today. My husband and I purchased our home in 2018, and it came with a permitted ADU and has an owner occupancy deed restriction. In 2022, several years after California prohibited enforcement of owner occupancy deed restrictions on new ADU permits, I contacted the city to see how I could have my owner occupancy deed restriction removed, essentially to be on equal footing as any neighbor who's building a new ADU. I was told that the only way I could have the restriction removed was to decommission my ADU by making a non-living space. This process would require me to tear out my fully functional kitchen and bathroom in the ADU, patch everything up, and have the city come out, confirm the decommissioning, then the restriction would be removed, and I could apply for a whole new ADU permit, put the whole same kitchen and bathroom back in, so all that effort, time, and money to come back full circle just to be in line with what all new ADUs are being offered. This is the only remedy available, and it is a cost prohibitive and unjustly punitive. It is also unfair to require us to apply for exemptions, which inherently requires sharing personal and private information in order to justify renting out our homes, whereas our neighbors with new ADUs wouldn't require such permission. It's unfair. One of the reasons Councilwoman Watkins gave for opposing the lifting of these owner occupancy requirements is that prior city councils have historically rejected lifting the restriction. So why should this council do anything different? My rebuttal would be that there has been no other time in history where California has prohibited enforcement of owner occupancy requirements for permitted ADUs after 2020. So it's logical that this issue would come to the forefront again. The laws have changed, and we are asking to have our ADU deed restrictions be changed to reflect the current law. Removing owner occupancy rules for all pre-2020 ADUs would remedy one of the several inequalities imposed on us merely because we have permitted prior to 2022, 2020, excuse me. Thank you for your time and patience, and I look forward to hearing from you regarding these issues.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Let me check something before you provide, Ms. Bush, or do we have folks online? So what we're going to do is just alternate back and forth. Person online, welcome and good afternoon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I have a couple items to bring up. In section 24.16.150, item seven, let me again repeat, 24.16.150, item seven, which is the U standards. The language is unclear to me, and I was hoping that one of the county, councilmembers would ask the staff if, when an ADU is rented, both the accessory dwelling unit and primary dwelling unit be registered with the residential inspection and maintenance program. The reason I'm asking that is I didn't realize that if you rent an ADU, that your primary dwelling unit, the house where I'm living in, also has to be entered into the program when it's not rented. So if that can be brought up, it's, I'm a District III member or resident, and I do appreciate you guys considering these changes to meet the state. Now, the one thing, Josh Wright, who is Assembly Member, Phil Tang's Legislative Director, he wrote, and I believe you have now seen copies of his statements, that the existing law, quote, prohibits local governments from imposing owner occupancy requirements. So if there was an ordinance on the books that required owner occupancy when AB 976 was signed, unquote, and then let me continuation with this quote, that that ordinance was already in violation of state law. So while I do appreciate hearing that there would be another ordinance being brought to the table by December, and I understand that it sounds like there's a requirement to get something on the books approved today, I'm just, again, supportive of removing that owner occupancy requirement because according to Phil Tang's staff member, that is what's the kind of the gist behind this proposal. Now, the other thing about the residents that have ADUs prior to 2020, you know, they took a risk, they developed the ADU, they've probably had their assessment values increased, they've contributed to the economy and to the city coffers, and now I think that we're treating them as alternate or substandard citizens because you're not, you're not removing that owner occupancy requirement, and that's pretty unfair to me. And like you'll hear many times, there's many others that agree with that assessment. And I also want to just point out, if you do remove that and they do sell, then that property will be reassessed at a higher value, which again, will bring in more revenue to the city and the county. So I just want to make sure that you understand that, yes, maybe not today, but I sure hope there's a future that's removed. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Good afternoon, welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kalen Kelson, and I appreciate the time today and--
You have a very soft voice. If you would raise that microphone, there we go.
And all of your efforts and for hearing us out today. So I built an ADU back in 2015. I'm subject to the deed restriction that has been, had huge consequences for me in other areas of my life because I've not been able to rent out my units or both units and, you know, be elsewhere if I need to be. And I'm watching, sitting here, and you all are building tons of housing, which is great, and I am trying to offer that in some cases for, you know, offer housing to my community and also benefit from that. And I think that's fair. You have developers who are now benefiting hugely from that as well. So I just would ask that you all consider that and move to, vote to remove the deed restriction on my property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another person online, Ms. Bush. We'll take that next person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Good afternoon, and thank you.
Good afternoon.
My name is Adam Evans. I was probably one of the first tranches as well, converted an ADU back in 2017. And I just want to make a couple of points here. Government Code 66315 was mentioned earlier, and it specifies that local agencies cannot use additional standards or impose any additional requirements. So this is in conflict, as was previously mentioned, with AB 967. That specifies that the bill would instead prohibit local agencies from imposing any owner occupied requirement on any accessory dwelling unit. This was signed into law in October 11th, 2023, so it's a bit concerning that the ordinance, the act of ordinance is in conflict with existing state law. We find that it's a bit punitive for those who went through the early rigors of converting ADU units. There was, you know, the permit fee revenues to do-- There was, you know, the permit fee revenues to do such a thing were extremely cost prohibitive. And when we look at, you know, the ease of restrictions for, or requirements rather, for covered parking, so on and so forth, that we were subject to higher costs, longer times, and unnecessary delays during the permitting process, and we don't understand why we're being held to such high restrictions, and we're opening the doors to other people, other developers, what have you, without the same restrictions. It doesn't make sense as a stakeholder in this community. So, I appreciate your time, and I would urge you guys to vote to remove the owner occupancy restriction. It's not in line with the legislative intent of AB 967. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council members. I'm an owner of an ADU built pre-2020, and I'm here today because the deed restrictions for the original ADUs has not been removed in accordance with ADUs built after 2020 despite the fact that this restriction is considered by current state law illegal and not allowed. And I've been, I've read that it's unenforceable as well. And to, on a side note, seems like people are getting hung up over the word proposed, but also not written in there is the word excluded towards the older units. So, there's one, there's many ways of reading this language. And the city's planning department proposed rescinding this restriction, but the council voted against it. Can any of you please clarify how ADU owners pre and post 2020 can be categorized separately in this manner? I won't go through all the legion of regions why this is unfair. It's also counterproductive to the assertion repeatedly claimed by the city council to want to use ADUs, which are built and financed by homeowners, to increase the housing stock. With the OA deed restriction in place, the unintended consequences are that both the primary residence and the ADU can be taken off the market and left empty in order to comply if the owner is not residing on site, which seems insane. There are multiple reasons for the owner not to be on site, health, family needs elsewhere, travel, and work. Should an owner be required, for example, to evict an ADU renter if they must be away from home? When there is a need to rent both units, why would deed restriction remain in force to reduce the potential habitation to zero? The loss of economic opportunity with regards to renting and limited property value in comparison to other post-2020 properties is a, in my opinion, less than satisfying way to be thanked by the city for the owner's expense of building an accessory dwelling unit. It's not a well-thought-out law, in my opinion, and it never was. Removal of the deed restriction seems an obvious and simple way to fix all of the above. Please officially remove the owner occupancy deed restriction for ADUs built prior to 2020. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Someone else online, Ms. Bush? No one else? Good afternoon. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Now there is. Okay, we'll take the person online, then we'll be right with you. Person online, good afternoon and welcome. Three.
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon.
My name is Carolyn. Good afternoon. My name is Carolyn Coleman, and I've lived in the Seabright neighborhood since 1981 when my husband and I were fortunate enough to be able to buy a small home at a time when a school counselor and nonprofit worker could do that. Fast forward to April 2019, when we completed a 750 square foot ADU for our son and his family to live in, since as community social workers, there was no way they could afford to be homeowners in the town he grew up in. I was shocked to learn that the council did not remove the owner occupancy requirement for ADUs built prior to 2020, which seems like a clear-cut fix for a two-tiered arbitrary system. Why should our property completed a few months prior to 2020, and those who built in the preceding years continue to have a deed restriction when our neighbors who have built since then don't have the same limitation? It was striking to learn that there have been 375 ADUs permitted since 2020, and that number will soon outpace the 550 ADUs built in the prior 34-year period. Now, those who took the initiative to create these units prior to 2020 are being unfairly held to a different standard. Whatever the reasons or unintended consequences that some council members think these deed restrictions must be retained are certainly being experienced in the change since 2020. We're almost five years down the road on this. Is there data on how many of these post-2020 properties are owner occupied? Analysis of any negative neighborhood or economic impact? The state clearly saw the benefit in acting AB 976 a year ago, which extends the prohibition against owner occupancy requirements indefinitely. Perhaps the selling of ADUs separately requires further study, and that was coupled in the ordinance, but why wait the proposed two years to fix the inequity in the ADU deed restriction? Take action today to fairly treat all city ADU property owners equitably. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Kathleen Prud, I live on the West Side and had originally built my ADU for my mom to live in. I believe that Santa Cruz sees itself as a city that is fair and equitable, and the city should be in alignment with Bill AB 976. I'm here today to ask that you vote to remove the owner occupancy requirement deed restriction from ADUs that were built prior to 2020. When I built my ADU in 2013, there was building requirements that have now been removed. A couple of examples are installing the sprinkler system, which required me to also update my water line and meter, and paving my 50 feet of alley access to the back of my house. I am, I am sure there are more requirements that have been removed from the permit process since 2013. Having the owner occupancy deed restriction limits what I can do with my property in regarding to selling or renting. In the future, if I need to move to assisted living, being able to rent out both homes would make this possible without having to sell my property and not displacing a tenant who would be living in the ADU or the main house, leaving one home vacant and not able to rent if I'm off property. My current tenant stated to me that she hopes to stay until she is moved to assisted living herself. I would hate to have to evict her or a future tenant if I need to sell my property. Removing the restriction would allow more available rental housing in Santa Cruz. Please be fair and equitable to all former and future homeowners with ADUs to have all the same requirements and not the same restrictions. You need to vote to remove the owner occupancy requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Another person online, Ms. Bush? Good afternoon, Ms. Paul Hemus. Good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, Carol Paul Hemus here, and again, I want to thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. I'm a member of about a 65-person group of ADU owners that have been kind of meeting off and on since early days. So, one point I'd like to make, there are three reasons I want to ask you to please remove the owner occupancy requirement. One is legal, one is logistical, and one is ethical. So, a number of our members have talked to Assemblyperson Ting's office. Some people have talked to the State Housing and Community Development Office. Some people have talked to the Housing Defense Fund folks, and the consensus of all those discussions is that the state did intend to remove all the ADU owner occupancy requirements in forward and arrears. And because of the way it was written, the legislative, I forget what they call it, the synthesis says all, and the actual law says proposed. So, I believe they're working on that, and that will only be a matter of time before they come up with a correct language thing. But in the meantime, we believe that that's the intent. So, here's the practical. Santa Cruz, I remember when this happened, it was one of the first cities in the state to have an ADU ordinance. We were proud of it. We published a, you know, little document that had all the kind of templates for how to go about it. There, it was a big hairdo. It was, it was in the media. We were cutting edge, and it was awesome. And the reason we did that is we wanted to increase the housing stock at no cost to the city. There was no money for the city to build housing. We wanted to incentivize owners to build the housing to help us with rentals and additional housing stock. So, like Kathy said, I built my unit in 2004 to house my parents. I know I've bored you with the story too many times, but I, it was a big deal. I had to do fire sprinklers, covered parking setbacks, I had to replace the water meter in the street. I had to do, there were just so many requirements, none of which are required today for an ADU. Let's see. Sorry. Oh, an owner occupancy requirement is actually counterproductive to the original goal of increasing a rental housing stock because people who can't comply with the owner occupancy requirement are legally not allowed to rent. So, I find it really ironic to, to sit and listen to the discussion of the downtown expansion plan around, you know, people who are going to be displaced, which I am all aboard on, and at the same time not realize that actually by maintaining this owner occupancy requirement, you're really, you're really displacing potential tenants. So, people like me, and I'm getting old, I'm 72, I built my ADU 20 years ago, so it housed my parents, it's housed my kids, I'm now in this stage in my life where I'm taking care of my grandkids, but soon I'm going to be looking at assisted living too. And, you know, I, well, anyway, please remove it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul Hemus. Good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
I'm Thomas Hamilton. I'm extremely deaf. I'm disabled, it. I built my ADU in 2011 when they first started it. I have the house on the Linda Vista project, which is up on Upper Alta Vista. My house was the first one there. We went through everything. They came out and had said, oh, you're eight inches too close to your house, you're going to have to reevaluate. So, we did all of our reevaluation, did a new survey. What started out as, they said, we were over $10,000 in fees. They said, oh, well, you can go low income. So, I said, okay, we'll go low income. But by the time they required to put the sidewalk in on a cul-de-sac that had none and moved my property and everything else and resurveyed, I ended up well over $130,000 when I had, started with $70,000. This is, I'm sorry, excuse me, this is BS. If you're going to give it to one, give it to everybody. It's only fair because I'm 78, I've been to my family's house for, since I came back to the States. My daughters, both are outside of the company, will not live here, and I think this is unfair. If I have to sell my property when I go to support or so forth, this is unfair. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Hi, I'm Cindy Florenzi. I want to thank you all for your service to our community. It's a big effort, and we complain sometimes about some of the issues, but overall, I'm so appreciative of everything that you do. And thank you to the planning department for bringing forward the inequity about the ADU categories. I know that took a lot of work, and I appreciate that you cared. With respect to the four council members who supported the deed restriction, keeping it on our property, I understand your concern about increased housing costs, it's a big problem, but I don't think the answer is to disadvantage a subset of ADU properties, especially when that disadvantage will just grow over time as more and more of them are permitted. I would appreciate understanding why you feel there, it's not a problem to have this inequity, to address that directly rather than just the increase in housing costs. How do you, do you feel that it's fair to have these two different groups for ADU owners? Do you feel that that's a logical division, that it's not arbitrary, that starting January 1st, 2020, there should be a difference between our regulations? It seems to me that equity and logic are so important in our housing regulations and consistency. I'd also appreciate knowing what your thoughts are about ADU properties in general. Do you support them? Do you think it's a mistake to go in that direction, that it's not helping with our housing stock? That would help, I think, maybe inform us about maybe your perspectives and why you might support keeping a restriction on just a subset of ADU properties. I hope also that you had a chance to read the letter from the gentleman whose wife has Alzheimer's. It's very moving, and I think also an important reminder that what you do has a real impact on people's lives, and sometimes those lives have pretty heavy burdens, and you can help them, or you can, you can actually make those burdens a bit heavier. I too have been in contact with Phil Ting's office when he was in office. I talked to Linda Rios, and she's an assistant who now works for, I believe, Assemblyman Correa. She has told me throughout that it was unenforceable to have separate regulations for pre-2020 ADU, so I was very surprised that attorneys said that it would be enforceable, but, you know, that, I guess that's up in the air. I think it's unfortunate that if we'd not had permits to begin with, we wouldn't have a restriction. I'm asking you to please consider equity in this. It's so important in our housing laws, and to do away with any kind of arbitrary distinction between our properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
My name is Sue.
Sue, why don't you pull, Sue, pull that microphone down so we can hear you. There we go. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you for the opportunity. I really, I'm going to speak for myself. I'm 76 years old, I have a heart condition. My property is, I'm pretty under trust because I have a heart condition, I don't know when I'm going to have the time bomb. So, I may have to move to, my son is in New York, or my daughter is in London. How is that going to be owner occupied, my property? I need, you guys need to look into the legal ramification part of it. People own, own the property under a trust. How do you handle that? I may be in a nursing home not far from here, but I cannot be owner occupied. Do you understand? Do you all understand that? I hope you have parents close to my age that you have thought about that. That, another, another thing I want to point out is, you cannot be just excluding a small portion of people. I did my ADU 2015. There were so many requirement, $35,000 for just stretching the dedicated line for the sprinkler system. Nine months later, they eliminated that, and so on, and so on. It feels like right hand does not know, left hand's doing. You agree, okay? For senior citizen, I can tell there's a bunch of us in this group that we're going to be excluded. I think that's inequitable, and thus, you need to serious thinking about that. Not far from now, you're going to be at my age, okay? That is not right. That is not right. And I need you to look into the legal part. I own the house, my house is under a trust, okay? What do you do? What did all these people, when they get sick, and they do, cannot be in their home, owner occupied? Bullshit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? Anyone else online? We have another person online. Good afternoon and welcome. Person online, good afternoon.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, hello, Mayor and Council. Thanks for taking my call. This is Eric Crawford. I hope you can split the two issues of owner occupancy and the condo conversions. On the condo conversions, I really think it'd be great if you looked at the issue of the multi-res condo conversion. That, as I mentioned last time, there's an effective ban on that, and that seems like a much more logical place to start. On the owner occupancy issue, as everyone has mentioned, it's just not fair, and I think that the city's legal position is tenable. I mean, the code does say proposed, but you know what? That's going to change. That was a drafting error, that's really clear. And I predict one of three things will happen, and it will happen very soon. Either the legislature will fix that drafting error, HCD will come down with a regulation, or you'll get sued. One way or another, if you maintain this owner occupancy restriction, you're going to look bad because it's going to be overturned one way or another. And if you really want to be the city council that promulgates this just patently unfair law, whatever consequences it has, which I think are greatly overblown, because as staff mentioned, pretty soon the number of post-2020 ADUs is going to surpass and overwhelm the number of pre-2020 ADUs. So, whatever effect it would have would be negligible in a large So whatever effect it would have would be negligible in a larger context anyway. But I think just do the right thing, and, and don't leave this as one of your legacies. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else, Ms. Bush? Anyone else with us? Matters back before the body? Ms. Contare Johnson is recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to proceed with staff recommendation to adopt ordinance number 202417. I won't read all of it, it's up on the board. Adopt ordinance number 202418, adopt a resolution other authorizing the city manager to submit a proposed amendment with the ordinance, so on, it's up on top. And then, direct staff to include as part of ADU ordinance changes planned for December 10th, 2024, removal of owner occupancy requirements for ADUs constructed prior to 2020. Direct staff to include as part of the ADU ordinance changes planned for December 10th, 2024, option for ADUs to be sold as condominiums.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
My goodness. My goodness. Ms. Brunner, we're going to acknowledge you on that second. Ms. Contare Johnson.
Great, thank you. There's not much more to say after hearing the speakers. I think they were very articulate and very aligned with the comments I made at the last meeting. Restrict, making, putting this restriction on our community members who were innovative, forward-thinking, helping us with our policy directions around our housing goals and ADUs as infill housing, it's unfair to put these additional restrictions, and they said it, I think, better than I did. Because of the timing of our emergency ordinance sunsetting, and the new state laws, and the gap that it would cause, and the challenges that we'd face, I am proposing as part of my motion to move forward with the second reading of the current ordinance before us, and then have this other ordinance come to us in December. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Certainly. Ms. Watkins is recognized. I know there are others who wish to be recognized, we'll work our way through this. Ms. Watkins on the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to also thank the, the folks that reached out to us and came and spoke today as well about their circumstances. I completely understand where you're coming from. I have really struggled with the state law coming in, and really have not wanted to do anything above and beyond state law. And I agree, I think this is interpreted as a way that is probably going to be overturned because of the lack of clarity for the owner occupancies, so I'm comfortable with that change. I think also, just kind of having now served on council for eight years and been part of many conversations around housing, one of the things that we talked about with the ADUs and with the owner occupancy was just maintaining community, maintaining neighborhood, and maintaining residency in that way. And that's changed with state law. It's been lifted, the development of more ADUs, the incentive of more ADUs is beyond our control, and there is an equity component, and our neighborhoods are changing, and that's just the reality of it. I think we can do what we can to try to ensure that we still have some local control to the best of our ability, and I think we saw a little innovation earlier today in the item that we have for our downtown expansion, and I really appreciate that. And that's also where we want to see the most infill. That's definitely something I heard overwhelming from our community as well, is how do we build, and how do we build in a place downtown where, where it makes sense for walkable communities and such like that. So I'm comfortable with the change. I would actually ask that we could split the motion to remove the fifth, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with the condominium component.
Any item, any item that can be divided shall be divided upon a request of a member, it does not take a second, so the question will be divided.
Great, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Brunner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to briefly state that I think this motion moves us forward in an equitable way to continue moving forward with our housing stock. As I said last time, this is really an equity thing, and when we refer to the ADU ownership prior to 2020. The fact that this direction complies with our housing element alignment and with what is the equitable thing to do, it's the policy we need to move forward on, and as we align with our state laws in December at that meeting, I really hope that this council moves forward with removing that owner occupancy prior to 2020. As for the condo conversions, you know, AB 1033 allows ADUs to be mapped as condos for sale, and I think that helps provide housing diversity that we need, and so that too, in this motion, will be brought back in the December meeting as we align with even more state changes, but I think this, this right now helps us not have a gap in that emergency ordinance, and so I'm happy to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newsom, on the motion.
Thank you, Mayor Keeley. I just want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Contare Johnson for bringing this motion forward, and Councilmember Brunner. I think, I think our decision is something we need to go back and look at. As stated, there's a lack of clarity around state law, especially around owner occupancy requirement, and it appears that what they wrote is different than what their intent is, which makes it hard to make a decision in the moment, as far as, when you're making decisions in the moment, but I think it's good to revisit that decision. I think it's also good to revisit and think over again the condos with the, sell of condos or sell of ADUs as condos as well, and possibly, possibly look at maybe options of how that could maybe be implemented, but then have staff come back and report back to us on what's taking place with those ADUs, how many properties are being sold, and, you know, and then council could also consider rescinding that idea possibly as well if we, if the data speaks otherwise. So, thank you.
Councilmember Brown is recognized, on the motion.
Thank you. I won't repeat what my colleagues have already said, but I am in agreement, particularly I want to highlight Councilmember Watkins' points here, and, and kind of respond, Ms. Florenzi, to your questions, because, you know, they, it sounds ridiculous to think, you know, it is an arbit, yes, this is an arbitrary, you know, 2020 is an arbitrary date, and, and it's arbitrary because the state of California, the legislature imposed that rule with new state law. We didn't select it, there's no logic to it whatsoever. It's part of the onslaught of state legislation that has pushed local jurisdictions to change, well, really override our own, our own codes. And so, you know, what I, and the grandest irony in, particularly with respect to the owner occupancy piece of this, is that with all of the real estate money and the work that's going on in the state legislature by very qualified people and their staff with all of that expertise, that we see the results of a drafting error. I mean, I just have to say that. So I, I do have concerns, I continue to have concerns about a lot of the state laws. The owner occupancy was intended to try to maintain community and to not really incentivize absentee landlordism from speculative investors, right? That doesn't mean that there aren't folks who are being unfairly or, you know, unintendedly affected by this. So I do, and, and the fact that this is just the way we're going to be moving forward based on state law, I do feel comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with the, you know, pursuing a reach, I'm going to call this a reach code, even though that's not the context in which we generally talk about reach codes, to allow for subdividing lots and, and selling ADUs. I think that that is much more of a stimulant to that speculative investment, and it's going to make it a lot harder for people who do want to buy a home and live in it to actually do so, because they're going to be competing with corporate interests, as they already are now, so much so in our community. So I do not feel comfortable with that, I appreciate the request to divide the motion, and I'll leave it there. Thanks.
For the debate or discussion? So I'm, have asked this question, so what's going on up here right now is, the vice mayor was not present for the debate and discussion for most of it, so I've asked the city attorney, out of an abundance of caution here, for her opinion on whether or not the vice mayor can vote on the measure. That's what's going on here.
And I have checked the council members handbook, and I have not seen anything that would prevent Vice Mayor Golda from participating further.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. You certainly can.
Thank you. I apologize when I was at court last week and I wasn't able to participate in, in a lot of this, but I have been following along, and I appreciate the idea of dividing the motion. I understand the controversy around the subdividing of the lots with ADUs. I, I actually can see how it would be helping with people getting starter homes if they built an ADU and split the lot and sold it, I could see that, but I understand your concerns as well. I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to say my opinion about the state law in regards to the ADUs being owner occupied, but it does seem ridiculous to have two sets of rules for our residents, and we've had, I've gotten a lot of communication from neighbors and friends that it's really kind of unfairly impacting them in ways that it seems unnecessary. So I'm happy with the motion that you guys brought forward, so thank you.
For the debate or discussion, seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Brown?
Let me, let me be clear on what we're doing. We're going through these one at a time, one at a time. So this is on item number one, the adoption of ordinance 202417, adding et cetera, so we are on that item.
If we're going to do it. I thought we were going to do it.
We're, we're going to do these one at a time. Here we go. First item.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Contare Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Passes and so ordered. Item number two, adoption ordinance 202418, amending items in the municipal code regarding accessory qualifying units, and the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Contare Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. Item number five is direct staff to include as part of ADU ordinance changes planned for December 2024, an option for ADUs to be sold as condominiums. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Contare Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Next motion is to direct the staff to include as part of the ADU ordinance changes in December of 2024, removal of owner occupancy requirements for ADUs constructed prior to 2020. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Contare Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. Item number five is direct staff to include as part of ADU ordinance changes planned for December 2024, an option for ADUs to be sold as condominiums. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Watkins?
No.
Brunner?
Aye.
Contare Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
And Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We are on item number 20, and this is planning and community development item regarding review and adoption of revised citywide fee update and user fees and related actions. Good afternoon, welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My former graduate student. Nice to see you again.
I am, a former student of Mayor Keeley's.
Of course, with the students that were in that class, I feel like I'm the student. You were also good and smart. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Vivian Pearson, Principal Management Analyst of the Planning and Community Development Department, with the guidance and support of the Finance Director, Elizabeth Cabell, and Assistant Director, Marisol Gomez. I am pleased to be able to present to you phase two of the comprehensive fee study. Phase one was finished and completed in 2017 of April, and the fees were effective in July 1st of 2017. MGT Impact Solutions was selected through a competitive process as the consultant to complete the study. I have Patrick Dyer here today, and along with his team, who has completed for the past year to work with the departments to revise their fees. Recent outreach efforts were conducted in August and September, and the revised fees from phase two would take effect on January 1st, 2025. I would like to invite Patrick, Vice President of MGT, to present the analysis findings and methodology.
Good afternoon and welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Appreciate you giving us time to present our, our findings and our results. As mentioned, we're looked at four departments, analyzed $4 million worth of costs, found that it was supported by 2.27 million in revenue, which works out to a, a cost recovery percentage of roughly 57%. The analysis worked with all the departments to increase those fees and improve the cost recovery, and we've proposed a year-one cost recovery of 3.35 million, which is an increase of $1 million over the prior revenues that supported those fee activities. For the four departments you see on the screen there, the majority of what planning and community development do is supported by fees, less so for public works, fire, and economic development. What we did for methodology is we break everything, everything down, all the costs of each of those departments into a fully burdened hourly rate. It's the personnel costs and the overhead, both the overhead from the department itself, as well as some citywide costs that support the fee departments. We calculate that full cost of the fee by multiplying the personnel cost times the time spent to provide the services to the public. We compare those costs to the fees received, and have a buy fee cost recovery for every single fee in each department's list of fees. So we identified the fees with the departments, completed the analysis, worked with the departments to understand the impacts of those fees and charges on the public, and they selected a percentage of cost recovery to recommend for each fee. So with that, I'll turn it back over to staff to continue the presentation, I'll be here for questions as well.
Thank you, sir.
So part of the phase two proposed by the department, so we have a couple updates across these departments here. So first, in blue, we have economic development, participating, fire department, public works, planning community development department. We also have additional studies that we brought forth for you later this December. That includes the finance department's merchant fees, fire department's first responder public safety impact, public works, and parks and rec. The additional update is for the current planning fees under planning department. We are proposing to bring forth five fees that were studied in phase one since 2017, have not yet reached 100% cost recovery, and therefore that is also part of our recommendation to bring them to 100% cost recovery on January 1st. For the finance department, there are three updates we are proposing. It is to update the title to the citywide fee schedule, or fee schedule for short, as well as updating web links to the schedule, so it references additional fee schedules from Parks and Rec and Water. And then lastly is to update annually in January. For the Department of Economic Development and Housing, there are 45, so we are projected a 21% increase in revenue of about $8,000 increase. There are 10 fee updates across four categories, which includes adding an additional fee for land use agreements review, and the fees for parklet applications will remain subsidized. For the fire department, we have the marine safety fees. There were 13 fees updated across the four categories, which would result in 16% increase in revenue, about $3,000 increase. The fees that will remain subsidized are for nonprofits. For the prevention schedule of the fire department as well, we updated 103 fees across four categories with an estimated increase of 69% for an increase of 140, sorry, excuse me, $240,000. We did some consolidation of the fees, instead of breaking the square footages down by building types such as commercial residential, we created a range of the square footage. For the Public Works Engineering Division, we updated 81 fees across seven categories, which would result in 37% increase in revenue of about $340,000. We added some fees for stormwater and also updated some development services fees. For the Planning and Community Development Department Building and Safety Division, we updated- Development Department Building and Safety Division, we updated 157 fees across 13 categories, and this would result in a 52% increase of about $480,000 increase in revenue in year one. We are taking a phased-in approach across three categories for 60% cost recovery, 80% cost recovery, and 100% cost recovery, meaning that any fees that are less than 60% cost recovery in year one, we would bump it up to 80% in year two, 100% cost recovery in year three. For fees that are between 60% and 80% cost recovery currently, we are bumping them up to 80% cost recovery in year one and 100% cost recovery in year two. And lastly, for fees that are between 81% to 100% cost recovery, bringing them up to 100% cost recovery in year one. So this phased-in approach is intended to alleviate any large increases. Lastly, for Phase Two, we have additional studies that we will be bringing forth to you in December. The first one is for Parks and Rec to review additional excise tax. Second is for the Fire Department, along with Police Department, where we will be updating the Public Safety Impact Fee. And by direction of City Council, the Planning and Community Development Department will also return with their Childcare Impact Fee to review the exemption of affordability restrictions. For Fire, they're also proposing to bring forth a first responder fee that probably will come to you around spring of 2025. Public Works is also reviewing the sidewalk inlet fee, and Area Undergrounding and Finance will be reviewing citywide merchant fees for a convenience fee program. And of course, for the past year, there have been a lot of meetings with various staff members across these departments, and so I'd like to especially recognize these staff members who have participated in the fee study update, as well as the MGT Impact Solutions Team. And myself and the departments are available to answer City Council's questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pearson. Questions, comments by members? The Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you for your presentation. I think this is really important in keeping our city fully funded. I do have a question. Did I, what did I hear you say about nonprofits?
The fees for the Marine Safety of the Fire Department will remain subsidized because they're fees that nonprofits would apply for.
Okay. And this maybe is a more specific question, but it comes back to a meeting that Director Butler and I had with the City Schools Project, and I'm wondering how they fit into this. As people are aware, over at the old Natural Bridges campus, there's some workforce housing that's underway, and I'm wondering if we can speak to that in terms of
Wonder why that came to mind.
Specific questions, and it's specifically around like, you know, parks or childcare impact, and how we want to continue to encourage other, you know, large employers to develop workforce housing. What kind of, what kind of wiggle room would we have with those partners?
Mr. Butler on the principal's question.
Thank you, Mayor Keeley and Vice Mayor Golda. So the, the impact fees as currently structured, they do apply to, to all projects. There is a provision in the municipal code that has some additional allowances. First off, the childcare and the public safety impact fees, those do not currently apply to 100% affordable projects, and that is something that we will be bringing to the council in December, because the council has asked that we reevaluate that. And so that will be an option for the council to consider in December, is whether or not to apply those fees to 100% affordable projects or not. Second, there is a provision in the municipal code that does allow for consideration of reduced fees for affordable housing. And we have historically only applied that to 100% affordable projects. And so the, the past practice has been, those 100% affordable projects can make a request that ultimately goes to the City Council. The City Council makes the decision. The way that is worded is it can only apply to the affordable units, but as I mentioned, we have only applied it to 100% affordable projects.
Okay. You see where I'm going, but I
I think to, to address where I think you're going, the council, based on the project that the school district has, which does include some that are not considered affordable, if I recall correctly, some that are above the 120% of area median income, that would require a code change for fees, like impact fees or other fees to not be applied.
I, I, I wonder if there's an opportunity here. I think of other large employers like Metro, or Dignity Health, or PAM, or Kaiser, certainly the university, and, and other places where we want to encourage them to address kind of the missing middle. I know that we have a lot of affordable adult income levels coming in, but the people that are really working and supporting the backbone of our community, I'd love to see more of those type of projects coming through. And so I don't know if there's a way to talk about that here now, or if any recommendations you can make where we could say if it's a project for, where they can be considered affordable, and they can apply for waivers or something like that, or if it would completely circumvent. But I don't think there'd be a large number of these projects, but in order to encourage them, having some sort of like carrot or offering might help some of the development moving forward. That's kind of my thought.
I wonder if what might work is you're going, not you, there will be a, a report back here in December, next phase of this. Could the gentle lady's question be included in that report in December? Could you address that in December? I'm asking really, if you would just let me look over here, can we do that in December? Mr. Butler, work for you?
Yes, that, that's fine. I would say that
Work for you, Madam Vice Chair.
The, the question that I would have for the council is if the council is interested, you could provide direction either by motion or, you know, just by the observation of your reactions. We could include, we could develop a code change that would address workforce housing, or we could bring back that for further discussion at the December hearing.
I wonder if that might be what we're looking for here is that. The second part is, is looking at that in December as opposed to giving direction now of a policy nature. Can I ask Ms.?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would certainly prefer that, and I'd
Ms. Brown on the question?
Yeah, that would be my preference. I think there are some, a good number of questions, and it's a really good point you've made, but there's a difference between public and private sector, big employers and things like that. So just to put it out, to include that, I think that makes sense. Thanks.
Okay, without objection, when we get to a motion, that'll be in the motion, I suspect. All right. Further questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Watkins.
In regards to some of the, like, the exemptions for the, like, 100% affordable housing, right? One of the things that I've observed is that, for example, some of the projects that have been entitled are now being purchased by other developers who are going to then draw on state dollars, right, to be able to make it higher, more dense, and affordable. So that's partially why I think it makes sense to have a consideration around, like, in applying those types of fees to those types of, of developers and developments. And I'm wondering if you want to speak to that, or if that's confirmed in terms of my observation.
Sure. What I would say related to that is, you know, we have had quite a bit of success in getting 100% affordable projects moving forward. We are just opening in the last week or two the 70 units of affordable housing at Pac Station South, and have Pac Station North under construction, and the Cedar Center Apartments. All of those would have contributed substantial sums of money to our, our impact fees as it relates to public safety and childcare. So there's certainly an opportunity cost there, and there is a, a demand for both childcare services and public safety services resulting from those. I, I think it's, it's a policy question. You know, when those projects come through, they are certainly, you know, scraping every penny to, to make sure that they can get funded, and there are demands that they continue to create. With the analysis that we're bringing in December, what we'll plan to do is show the council with those past projects and with the projects that we have coming up anticipated, here's what the revenues would be at 25%, 50%, 75%, and 100% of the fees. And then that gives council an understanding of how much those would be paying and how much we would get in the future for some of the projects that we have lined up. And if there are any additional data points that the council would like, we're happy to help provide that information, and feel free to reach out to myself, either, you know, after this meeting, or if you've got additional things that you've thought of now, feel free to, you know, provide that information and feedback.
No, I appreciate that. Yeah, I think, you know, I'm certainly interested in seeing that increase or be applied to affordable housing units. I think it is an impact. There is a mass amount of them being produced, and they're able to draw on a lot of resources financially to make their projects pencil. So I think it does make a lot of sense. I know that also in the past, we've had conversations about NEXIS studies and other studies that really show that when you have this type of development, there is an impact to community and infrastructure, et cetera. Are there any potential areas in which we're not addressing in this proposal that you feel would be worthwhile to explore, and if so, what would those be?
That's a great question. I think the, the Fire Department can speak to this separately, but my understanding is they're looking at the Public Safety Impact Fee and looking at updating that based on the additional assumptions that they have for infrastructure needs over the next 10 or so years. You'll recall, Councilmember Watkins, it's been four years or so, five maybe, since we adopted that Public Safety Impact Fee, and, you know, those, those resource demands change. And so that's one of the areas that we are being proactive. The other thing that I would say is, from a transportation perspective, we're contemplating how we look at our transportation network and our transportation impact fee. I think we will be looking at how that is revised in the future, and it's largely focused on vehicular traffic movement now, and having a greater focus on pedestrian and bicycle enhancements. I think it's something that presents an opportunity for us to look at changing how we do business in the future. And your points, your question is a really good one, and I, I think those are the ones that jump to mind, but it's also something that I think it's important for myself and all the departments really to think critically about to understand how the infrastructure needs in each department could potentially be funded through new impact fees.
And would a next step be essentially to request a NEXIS study, or staff to present to the council a NEXIS study package of potential fees to explore for either increase or additions?
So that, that Public Safety Impact Fee update is underway. We have initiated some conversations with the, the Public Works Department about transportation fees, and so I think probably early next year, we'll be talking with the council to get direction to look at those new impact fees. With respect to others, if any council members have ideas, feel free to reach out to either myself or the applicable department head, and then we can look at the next steps, whether that would be coming to council and getting a direction to proceed, or directly engaging with a, a consultant to work on that NEXIS study. When we do the impact fees, you're correct, we do have to prepare those NEXIS studies in advance, and then make sure that the, the impact is tied to the fee and that the fee is proportional to the impact.
Yeah, I think that there's probably a really good data from some of your community outreach events around some of the projects that are being proposed around potential foreseeable impacts that you could probably draw on to help inform some of these potential NEXIS studies that could go to supporting some of these impacts. But yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brunner is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to continue that thread in that this Wednesday is the city's Public Safety Committee meeting at 4:30, and this is one of the agenda items that will be discussed. And in the staff report that's posted, the city contracted with a public finance, development, economics, and clean energy bond consulting firm to review the Public Safety Impact Fees and exemption for 100% affordable housing. They've provided a draft report with their recommendations, which will be outlined and discussed. Fire and Police will have a presentation, and it will be brought forth on the December 10th City Council meeting to seek further discussion and potential motion approval. So that will be continued.
Further debate, excuse me, further initial comments? If I could ask, perhaps whoever prepared Table 1 on page 20.4, annualized costs and revenues of years, 1 for city user fee program, et cetera. Tell me when you're there, and I'll be, thank you. So as I understand this table, it indicates user category by user category, what in effect is our cost of providing service, a fee associated with that, a proposed set of increases in those fees to more fully recover 100% of our costs. Correct? We're okay so far?
Correct. So some of the fees, the departments have decided to not recover 100% of them, so they are differentiated.
Right. So if I understand it, take a look at the column F. That is the increase in each of the fees by department. If we look at column D, that indicates the cost recovery policy. So in effect, we are recovering, if we adopt this, we will be recovering quite a bit of our cost of providing these services from the people who are asking for those services. And if I understand, you and I've been through this years ago, the differences, I understand it, between a fee and a tax, is that a fee is for a service which is voluntary on the part of the person who is being asked to pay the fee. This is not something that they're voluntarily deciding, I'm going to be, you know, developing something or, or engaging in activity that's 100% voluntary by the person who's doing it. And so we can then, in that context, charge 100% of the cost of providing that to that person who voluntarily is asking for this. A tax, on the other hand, is involuntary. Someone has to pay that tax. It doesn't matter if they want to or don't want to. It's not a voluntary choice. And for that, they can expect, quite frankly, nothing directly in return for it. That's how a tax works. You may get a return on that. You may get some benefit, but that's not what a tax is. A tax is an involuntary payment, and you can expect no relationship between what you pay and what you get back. A fee, you can expect direct relationship, what you're paying and what you get for that. So if that's still true, then, poor City Council colleagues have to hear me every time on this basic concept, and that is, I believe in 100% cost recovery. I'm a jealous guardian of the general fund. And so I have a question. Every time we provide one penny of subsidy on a fee, why are we doing that? Why are we not getting 100% cost recovery? Those are policy choices, but they have millions of dollars of consequences for our general fund. So my question then is, you'll never guess in a million years, why at this stage, because I understand we have a plan, over time, try to get that, why wouldn't we do that today?
I think that's a great question, Mayor.
Thank you.
I think most of the departments have chosen to receive, to go towards 100% cost recovery approach, with the exception of the Planning and Community Development Department. The building fees haven't been studied since 1997. It's been a while, and so we wanted to be cognizant of the community members who are receiving these service or receiving these service or user fees to be able to, to, to apply, and we don't want to disincentivize, for example, water heater permit. We don't want to charge necessarily a full 100% cost recovery yet to disincentivize others who otherwise might see that it's too expensive and then therefore result in a safety hazard potentially.
Let me ask the department who is dealing with that specific issue. Chief, is that you? Is that you, sir, or mister? Mr. Jervisoni, is this you on this precise point?
I was one of the
Here, come on, get the microphone. There we go.
Yes, I was one of the deciders on that point. To gradually institute the increases, therefore not disenfranchising some of the citizens of the community and coming in and pulling permits for things like water heaters, electrical panel upgrades, you know, to gradually recover those costs over the three years.
So I understand that from a policy perspective, but the other way I think to look at that is, in three years, somebody's going to pay that, and we're going to stop subsidizing it. Really what I'm doing, keep in mind here, the artifice I'm creating here is I'm talking to my colleagues, okay? That's what I'm doing here. So they know that, and you know that. My desire is to recover these faster. We have great pressures on the general fund. Voters agreed to, to increase the sales tax, increase our general fund. We've got all kinds of cost increases in our employee contracts that are, that are coming up. I'm interested in cost recovery much quicker than a three-year plan. So thank you very much for that. Now let me see if there are questions or comments from other members of the council. Seeing and hearing none, let's go out to the, to the public, see if there are questions or comments on this item. Seeing and hearing none, matters back before the body for action. Sure. A motion would be a good idea.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to move the staff recommendation and maybe not do the three years. Have it be, I'm looking at, Matt wants to say something, mid-motion.
If I may.
Yes.
Appreciate that, that motion, Vice Mayor Goldar. To the mayor's point, it's completely at the council's discretion. So what staff has brought forward is a little bit of a
Phased approach.
A soft runway to eventually get to 100%, but if the council's interested in accelerating that and perhaps starting at 80, and moving to 100% in the subsequent year rather than a, a three-year runway, that's certainly a direction that we would welcome if there's interest.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
So I will move the staff recommendation, and I will make an edit where, rather than the phased approach, we'll go to a, a two-year, starting at 80, and then doing 100 the second year, and with some added direction around looking at some workforce housing projects that are also paid for from another tax base, which is us, out of our, on.
Second.
Oh, second?
There's a second. On your, on your motion, Madam Vice Chair, you may open, excuse me, Madam Vice Mayor, you may open.
Thank you. I, I don't have a lot to say. I kind of already said what I had to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins on the motion.
May I have a friendly amendment that we also add direction for staff to present to us more information about possible Nexus studies that could outline impacts of development and recommendations as to how to potentially pursue those.
Agreeable, Maker? Agreeable, second motion? You are the second, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
You're gonna agree with yourself? Okay, there we go. Good enough. So further on the motion? Ms. Brown on the motion.
Just briefly, I will say, you know, I'm going to support the motion. I appreciate the interest in accelerating this timeline. I recognize this will be, you know, a hit for people who are in, in, in the process or about to engage in the process of pulling permits through planning. But I want to remind us all that the full cost recovery policy was adopted in 2017, and this, and I, and I'm not, no judgment about the time it's taken to come back to us with some of these, and this is a Phase Two, but that's a long time. So we've, as a city, said, we want to recover those costs, and we haven't been doing that. So I, I think that accelerating the timeline makes sense, and appreciate all the work that's gone into it. It's a long time coming. Thanks.
Further debate or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Melontaya Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goldar?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and is ordered. Madam Bush, Madam Clerk, do we have a for the business come for us?
Not for me, no.
City Attorney for the Business come for us?
No for the business.
Seeing and hearing none. The Vice Mayor, in order to make up for not being here the entire day, moves to adjourn, non-debatable. Second by Mr. Newsom, who wants to add that he was very pleased with the outcome of the Tennessee game this last Saturday. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Post motion carries and is ordered. We stand adjourned.